Thank you. Okay, so let's call to order the Village of Riverside Planning and Zoning Commission Regular Meeting of Wednesday, September 22, 2021. Assistant Village Manager Monroe, will you call the roll, please?
I will. Chairperson Mateo.
I'm here.
Commissioner Marhol.
I'm here.
Commissioner Matthews.
Present.
Commissioner Miller.
Here.
Commissioner Brahm.
I'm here.
We have two absences for Commissioner Henigan and Commissioner Pelletier.
But we have a quorum. Attorney Mars, would you like to do your legal language for us?
Sure. Just unfortunately, after a few in-person meetings, we have returned to a remote meeting for tonight. And I just want to outline for the public who may be watching that while there is a statewide public health emergency, as there is now, we're allowed to have these remote meetings without a physical quorum present at the meeting location, subject to certain rules and restrictions. Just a reminder to all the commissioners, if you have any trouble hearing, please, or lose your connection, please send a message to Ashley so we can get you back in or fix the problem. Also a reminder that all votes need to be by roll call. The meeting is being recorded, live streamed, and the public will be able to participate remotely. And I think that covers it. Thanks.
Thank you. And like before, if you're in a quiet space, you don't need to keep yourself muted. All right, I am going to invoke Chair's prerogative and change the order of the agenda. I want to move to Section 4, Visitors, Petition, Citizens Requesting Communications, starting with introduction of our newest Commissioner, Melinda Brahm. Welcome. Thank you for being willing to serve the community.
Thank you. Thank you. Is this where I introduce myself? My name's Melinda Brahm, and my husband and I have lived in Riverside since 2002. We've raised three lovely daughters. And since we've moved here, I've held various positions on school boards and committees. I'm hoping that I can bring my experience and my knowledge as a real estate attorney, local real estate attorney, to the board, and I'm hoping to provide some benefits. And I look forward to working with you all and the community.
Well, thank you and welcome. And I'd like to thank Commissioner Sean May for his service to the commission for several years. Next up, the introduction of Village Planner, not planner, Francisco Jimenez. Welcome. Really glad you're here. You've been here since August 2, but this is our first one since your arrival.
Yeah, the first one was canceled unfortunately, but yes, this is my first in-person/virtual meeting. But yes, I've been here about a month. It's been interesting thus far. Definitely a lot to catch up on and a lot to learn, but you know, it's been good.
Well, we're happy you're here and look forward to working with you.
Thank you.
And you all know that I tend to be a little bit formal. Francisco has asked me to call him Francisco, so I will do that.
Very anticlimactic. I apologize.
All right, let's go back to President Ballerine. Are you a visitor? Is there something you would like to say at this section of the agenda? I'm going to take that as a no. So we'll go back to our regular order of agenda, go back to Section 3, Approval of the Minutes, the Planning and Zoning Commission Regular Meeting Minutes of July 28, 2021. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
I second.
Any edits?
I noticed some typos and things like that, but I didn't make notes of them.
If you have--
But I think impacted the intent or the meaning of the words.
Okay. If you've made notes, you can share them with Assistant Village Manager Monroe or with Francisco. If you didn't, then don't worry about it. Okay, Francisco, please call the roll.
Okay. Is there any order which anybody prefers or just?
I like going last.
Okay. Okay, Commissioner, sorry, Commissioner Henigan.
She's not with us tonight.
Oh, sorry. Commissioner Brahm.
Here.
Commissioner Miller.
Yes.
Sorry, Commissioner Marhol.
Hi.
Commissioner Matthews.
Hi.
And I believe Commissioner Pelletier is absent.
The Chair.
Oh, sorry. Chairperson Mateo.
I also vote yes to approve the minutes. I watched the meeting. I was away for work, but having watched the meeting, I accept the minutes. Very nice job on them. Okay, so that passes. And I would like to thank Commissioner Pelletier for acting as Chair for that meeting in July. Moving on, do we have a village board update?
No, there, sorry, there were no updates from the village board. It's pulling up the agenda here.
Moving on to new business, a discussion, initial discussion of non-conforming accessory structures and any issues related to the topic. This addresses 1010-4-E1. Hopefully you had a chance to listen to the conversation at the village board meeting from May 20th and perhaps read that section of the village board's meeting minutes. So we didn't have a memo on this. Did anybody not have a chance to look at the meeting? So to recap, Trustee Pollock, this is in regards to the garage variation on Millbridge, the oversized garage that collapsed under the weight of snow over the winter. Trustee Pollock really did not see that it was a unique situation. I talked to him afterward, and he said, well, maybe it is unique, given that their concrete pad was only 11 years old and in very good condition. But at the time of the meeting, he thought it was not unique and that granting this variation set a precedent. And so maybe we should reconsider, we should recommend change to that part of the code so that if this happens again, residents don't need to go through the variation process to rebuild the non-conforming structure.
Right. I'm not sure Chairman, Chairperson Mateo, how you want to approach the discussion, so I'm jumping in if that's okay.
It's again, it's an initial discussion. We don't, you know, we don't have any paperwork to work off of. We're just getting your ideas. I also want to get input from our staff members and what they think from both a legal perspective and from a planning perspective, what the implications might be.
It's, it's, I listened to both the village board meeting and then thought about our discussion in July and then read the meeting minutes from the village board meeting. Ms. Kishima said something that I think is fairly applicable, which was non-conformities, especially existing ones, are always a tricky situation. And I think that obviously that continues to apply. And the question is, is whether it's by right or by variance to replace an existing structure that's completely destroyed. And I did think about this. And I would say that, and this is obvious because those are the words I'm going to use, is I think it is still appropriate to treat the replacement in kind of an existing structure as a variance. And the part of the reason being is if it's by right, then there really is no control on the part of the village about how newer, more current rules and zoning elements are applied. And for some, for good reason, we've come up with and implemented some of these new rules, for example, impervious. By right means that we're ignoring everything that happened afterward and rules that were put in to benefit the community. That's really the summary version. Other examples could be where an existing non-conforming structure is over the property line, for instance. And we know that there are a few garages in town that do that. I would argue that that is not a situation where we would want to allow an existing structure to be reconstructed by right to its original configuration, because that fairly clearly violates, goes against some things that we do for good reason, which is your structure can't exceed your property lines. That's where I'm at right now.
Can I say something, Chairman?
Please.
Those are good points, but one of the things I wanted to point out is I think Trustee Pollock's original suggestion was to be somewhat limited. I don't think he was talking about any building. I think he was talking mainly about garages, and you can certainly limit it that way. And I think he also suggested, or perhaps President Ballerine suggested, that in order to have this right, you would need to meet impervious surface requirements on the lot overall. And to your point, Commissioner Marhol, I think you could also limit it so that we say that you don't have this right to rebuild in the event that your, that your building is over the property line. So you can put on those kind of restrictions if you want to create this right, but make it very limited.
I think that's true. And I certainly am not going against what President Ballerine said or what Commissioner, or sorry, Trustee Pollock said. But if we're talking about that few of a number of structures, then why go through this, you know, I'd rather not try to create really unique, very curated sets of restrictions for a very limited number of potential properties. It gets away from the idea that the zoning code should be fairly broadly applicable. I'm starting to get in danger of talking too much here, but I don't think that the variation process is so restrictive that we're putting an undue burden on our current non-conforming structures.
Other commissioners?
Yeah, Chairperson Mateo?
Please.
Oh, let me make sure I'm on. Yeah, I just want to just note real quickly, I completely agree with Commissioner Marvel on this. I don't, variances exist for a reason, and I think this is, this is one of them. I, you know, I think we did the right thing here. I think this is the best approach going forward. And I'm, you know, not, not everything in the world can or should be codified. So I just want to lend my support to what Joel said. That's it.
So right now, John, or I'm sure Matthews, you're in favor of leaving it as is and requiring structures to be built to conformity or go through a variation process?
That's correct.
Other thoughts? One thing I'll add in, I've had discussions with Trustee Pollock since then. He said that this need to reach conformity really doesn't have that clear of a public benefit, that the neighbors have been living with an oversized garage the whole time. That's what they're used to, and they wouldn't necessarily benefit from, and I'm sort of putting words in his mouth, from having it built to 800 square feet. I don't know if you have any thoughts on that?
I'll risk talking more and say that that's very much a case-by-case issue.
Commissioner Miller, any thoughts?
My thoughts are somewhat confused, I guess. I can see both sides. I find the whole idea of the non-conforming portion of the code somewhat confusing. I mean, it talks about as long as the building is otherwise lawful. Not really sure what that means. I assume it means lawful outside of the zoning code. I find it hard to imagine when that would come up, but I guess it could. I think in the particular Millbridge instance, despite some of the trustees saying, you know, that why was this unique? Seems like it's just like any other oversized garage. I think these variance requests are always difficult, but I can certainly imagine having been presented with another situation which was sufficiently different that we wouldn't have made the same decision. I mean, it's really hard to think of, you know, a whole panoply of alternatives. So I think the variance procedure still has value. And I think one of the things we typically look to is are we getting a lot of requests for rebuilding oversized garages? And if we are, well, then let's look at a text amendment. If, you know, we can make a significant change to the ordinance, so we're not a burden and everyone's fairly treated. And unless we start getting those, I don't know if it's necessary in this case. I think it's also, I mean, you could have it limited to garages or accessory structures, I suppose. I think if you call out just garages, that seems a little, besides the fact lots of people don't even use their garages as garages. So anyway, those are my thoughts. I mean, and somewhat indifferent. It seems like there are some other things that the commission could spend more time looking at, and maybe it's something that's going to happen under this work plan concept, such as looking at the whole concept of impervious surface and how rigorously that, those percentages are actually applied, both by the PCC and the village or the board as a whole. I think that's perhaps a more significant issue that we should look at.
Commissioner Brahm, any?
Yes. Did I mention I was a real estate attorney? And I do a lot of business in Riverside as well as the surrounding suburbs. And it is very seldom that I encounter a certificate from Riverside that does not have compliance issues. So I, too, like trustee, or like Commissioner Miller, can see both sides to the story, both sides. My gut is telling me that it would be safer and more reasonable to not have a blanket, you know, you can build whatever was there before, you know, you can, you know, just, there needs to be some sort of checks and balances. And there, we do have codes for a reason. We do have restrictions for a reason. And as long as the variance process is fair and reasonable, there shouldn't be any problem with taking this as a case-by-case basis. But, you know, I think of driveways. I think of all of those closings that I go to where you've got a driveway that is in violation of the current codes because it is on the property line and it's not one foot off. Now, if those people replace the driveway, is, do they have to go for a variance? And I apologize if I don't, if I don't know that. But I think that they should be allowed to rebuild their driveway in the, in the same place. Is that what we're talking about here? Or are we just limiting it to garages and structures?
That's an excellent question. What the board asked us to look at was limited to structures.
Okay.
And I think Attorney Mars is correct that what they were really thinking about was garages. And I have that in my notes from my discussion with Trustee Pollock as well. But that brings up another question as well, if we're, why limit it to garages rather than, as Commissioner Miller brought up, all non-conforming parts of the property?
And there's, there's an argument to be made that when somebody buys a home, their hope is that the structures that are there can, can remain there should snow, should they, should they be collapsed because of snow on the roof is, is what happened in the Millbridge property or whatnot. So I, I have to think about this a little bit more, quite frankly. I do see both sides. And, but I, right now, I'm leaning towards the benefit of code compliance and having the, having the people request a variance to rebuild, much like this other, the other property owners did with the, with the garage, the most recent incident.
I think there is some value to, you know, having a sort of a waiting period that someone has to apply for variance rather than just saying, oh, we're going to put up the same thing again. And it does, as Commissioner Marhol said, it does provide a little more, you consider, well, do we really want this exact same thing if you have to go through the variance process? Is it worth it? Or do we think creatively here and do something a little different? So if the goal is to eliminate, you know, the non-conformities, this is an incredibly long-term process, but I think there's some value there. On driveways, I think, as I read it, they can be reconstructed exactly where they are in their exact footprint, whether it's a matter of curb cuts or being on a side lot line or whatever, which for some reason that choice was made. But for hedges, if you have a non-conforming hedge and 20% of it is damaged, you're supposed to take out the whole hedge. I don't know how you decide how long your hedge is, but there's a few, you know, little quirky provisions, I think, in the non-conformities. And then I think the other thing is that, you know, the, it's like when you have these non-conforming structures, a part of the reason for having the regulation, I think, is to make sure that no one is actually enlarging their non-conforming structure. That's at least half of what provision is, you know, you can't extend it a little bit or build onto it if it's non-conforming. So it stops that.
So a question for staff. Trustee Pollock and I talked about whether there would be any benefit to, instead of going through the variation, and instead of making it just okay to do, go somewhere in the middle and require special use. Are there any pros or cons that you can see going down that road?
I'll jump in first. So especially, you know, one of the problems, as Trustee Pollock pointed out, for the garage situation that we were talking about is his perception that this wasn't unique and therefore didn't, and also that it wasn't necessarily a hardship or meeting the standards for a variation. And variations are tough, tough to get, whereas a special use is, is a little different in that it's generally considered to be something that would be acceptable within a zoning district. But, but, you know, we want to look at the individual circumstances and make sure that it's appropriate at that location and, and in that circumstance. I think it, I'd have to think about whether we could limit the special use just to people who have the existing oversized garages, or whether that may, you know, open the door to anybody seeking an oversized garage so long as they met the standards. I'm guessing we could probably, you know, divide it in such a way, but I would have to think about that a little bit.
Another thing that you might consider when talking about the special uses it pertains, you know, as it's cited in the code at this moment, is that, you know, as long as I'm applying correctly here, is that it falls into two categories. Uses publicly operated or traditionally affected with a public interest, in which case a private garage, you know, or a structure on a private property would not necessarily be in the public interest or greater public interest of a community. And then the second is that it would be uses entirely private in character, but of such an unusual nature that their operation may give rise to unique problems with respect to their impact upon neighboring property, public facilities, or a village as a whole. And so, you know, it's for the commission and the board to determine whether those definitions, as they currently exist in the code, would apply in this particular, you know, proposition or proposal, and whether they, they fit or if there would be some other adjustment required if it was used in that way. Just for a thought.
It's not clear to me how the special use would apply. So I guess I'd want further thoughts from Trustee Pollock as to why he thinks a special use would be appropriate for a private garage. It's not a daycare or, you know, something else. This is just having a large garage.
He wasn't committed to it. He just said that it was a potential way of doing it. So again, turning to staff, the various places that you've worked, do you remember what the codes were there regarding destruction of non-conforming structures? Is this pretty standard, the language that we have, or are we?
Yeah, yeah, it is. It is very standard. It's in almost every zoning code. It does create some issues. The one memorable experience I had with it, there was a community where there were a lot of, because they'd redone their zoning districts, there were, there ended up being, for instance, a lot of multifamily buildings which were now in single-family residential. And what those people were running into were situations, for instance, where, you know, you've got a six, six-unit apartment building that may be worth, you know, $800,000. And they were having trouble getting financing to buy those because of this provision, because if it burned down for some reason, they could only rebuild it as a single-family house, unless they went through the variation process, which is not a sure thing, as we know. And so there was a lot of concern about that situation in that community. I think we did ultimately consider some amendments to address that situation. But that's a little different, but that's an example of how, how this kind of language can affect, can affect property owners.
I'll speak a little bit to first day impervious surface issue that was brought up earlier, and I'll also speak to the driveway replacement. Maybe that's the easiest to start with. If there were a resident that has a non-complying driveway, it abuts the property line. According to our zoning regulations, we would require that only if they are changing the material of that driveway are they required to move it, move it a foot minimum away from the property line. If they were to repaint the concrete driveway and replace it with concrete, they would not be required to make that change. When we do encounter issues with residents proposing new projects that would impact their impervious surface calculations, we, you know, if they're going to be 20 square feet beyond their impervious surface allowance, we encourage them to either modify their proposed project or reduce existing impervious surface. If there's, you know, exceptionally long driveway or extra sidewalk or something along the front door that, that's not needed in order to meet those requirements, rather than going for a variation, for, to meet their new project request. for, to meet their new project request. Um, and then the last thing that's unrelated to the other two, but when there's a, a change to, for example, a garage that's being built, we have additional standards and requirements that need to take place, such as a grading review, when any of the footprint of that garage changes place. And again, I believe that's from guidance based on decisions made by this commission to ensure that, um, again, the, the changes in grade or impervious surface are not negatively impacting that property or adjacent properties from, from water and other things. So there's already some review. So in that way, having a, a direct application for someone to rebuild exactly where they, they were would not require that additional review potentially. But in some cases it may still be required. So I figured I would, I would add that just for your consideration.
Thank you. So what about the perception that we set precedent that this was not a unique situation, an oversized garage that wants, they want to replace? Going forward, that can be problematic if we keep those variables.
Well, I, I think it's absolutely a unique situation. I mean, it's how often are, are oversized garages destroyed by snowstorms? You, you have to look at the totality of the circumstances. This is, this is not a scenario where someone is, is willfully going out there and tearing hit her garage down and saying, I'm just going to rebuild it same as it was, and it's going to be non-conforming. I mean, it's a situation where it was destroyed by nature. So when you, you look at everything like that, I, 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 I just, I don't, I don't see a scenario on all fours of this coming down the pike anytime. To me, that's further to the variation process. That's why we have variations. Um, I, I, I might, my view might be completely different if someone took a sledgehammer to their garage one afternoon, just because they wanted to rebuild it. Um, so I, yeah, you just, this doesn't happen this much. I think a variation is just acceptably here. And I also want to note that at least the, um, two of the trustees who are, um, on record in, in the minutes, uh, opining on this, both said that this was the right decision. So, you know, the system is working, the variation system worked in, in, in this context. Um, so I, I, I see absolutely no need to, you know, to, to draft a text amendment. I, I think this actually gives us, gives us more control because I guarantee there are going to be some non-conforming garages that in, in the village might not want to see rebuilt, you know, we, so I'm not certain giving some people carte blanche to do that by putting in the, in the, in an ordinance is the best approach. This seems to protect both the citizens and, and, and it protects the, the, the community as a whole to leave it in a, as a variation.
Others?
I, I think John said it as well as, John said it well. There, there were other trustees that also supported the decision-making process that we had. And I, I do believe he's entirely correct in saying that the process is working. Um, there, yes, Melinda's Commissioner Brown is absolutely correct. I think probably every property to some degree in the village may, may violate some aspect of the code. But there are very, there are not that many non-conforming structures that are coming in front of us where someone needs a variance process to rebuild. I'm not going to say it's a, uh, solution looking for a problem that, that's one step too much because I, I think trustee Pollak's commentary does have a point, but I'm not sure that there's that much to be gained by revising the code for this concern. I, John's, John is right. The, the process is working. The variance process is not fun, I don't think, for any, any one of our community members, but it's, it's not that onerous either. I mean, we have people who come, they invest some time to fill out the paperwork, determine what they need to do, figure out where they might be different from the code, and then they spend a little time in front of us and they come in and justify what they're asking for. That's, I'd say a minor inconvenience in exchange for us as a board, or sorry, commission and then the village board being able to kind of regulate and make for a better community.
I think, I, I think that, um, I, I would concede that this was sort of a difficult case. I can see how some people could argue that it's establishing some kind of a precedent, and it's really hard to tell from looking at minutes and all the rest. But as I recall, one of the things that we, at least in my decision, was the existence of the current foundation. The, you know, the, the contractor from the garage company, as I recall, had stated that he couldn't cut the foundation down to size without damaging it, as I recall. And therefore he would have had to have done additional work. Now, I agree that we had only one witness in front of us and we didn't perhaps explore that as much as possible if this was some higher import case. But I think that certainly influenced me and we asked the question, you know, is it possible to minimize the size of the garage? I think the other thing that was relevant to us that I think, at least again, I believe was that the, um, commissioners had very recently, within less than a year, purchased this property specifically for the large garage and they were actually using it. It wasn't someone that just bought a piece of property and they happened to have a large garage and, you know, it wasn't real, they didn't really care about it. They were specifically using it and it was, they convinced at least me that it was of value to them. So it was more than a mere inconvenience to them to not be able to rebuild that garage within the footprint. And again, since they couldn't shave down the footprint, I mean, maybe they could have gotten away with 900 square feet or something, but they, according to the garage contractor, they couldn't really shave it down. So it was rebuilt to them existing footprint. So that's how I see it.
Your person, Mateo?
Please.
Um, we just, in, in response to your inquiry about the, the precedential value of this, I, I'm not concerned about this having set a precedent at all from a legal perspective. I think the commission did a great job of drawing out, uh, a number of facts concerning this property that would easily distinguish it from a, from a case where uh, the outcome was different. And e- each variation is, is very fact-driven and, and doesn't really create a precedent, um, just because you granted this one, the, the facts of any subsequent one are going to be different enough that we could distinguish it. So I'm not concerned about that.
Thank you, Attorney Mars. Commissioner Brown, do you have any thoughts to add?
Um, may, may I ask, do we have a process to obtain a special use right now in, in the board? I mean, what, what, what's involved with regard to getting, obtaining a special use? Perhaps Attorney Mars, do we have some sort of process?
Right. Well, there, there is no current special use that would allow you to request one for an oversized garage, but in general, let's take the, you know, the daycare, the drive-through or some other example that are more common for special uses. It, it's similar in that you fill out an application, you pay a fee, there's a public hearing, there's a recommendation to the board. It's just a, a different set of standards than a variation. Looking more at, at whether the special use would affect, uh, that particular area and is it appropriate at that particular location.
And there are public notices?
Yep. Public notices is published, uh, notice to neighbors, et cetera. So it's similar in that respect.
But it's less time-consuming?
No.
No? The standard is less? Is that, is there?
Well, well, to the extent, to the extent that, uh, you don't need to show, uh, practical difficulty or particular hardship, uh, which is usually the, kind of the toughest hurdle for someone presenting a variation, uh, just due to the fact that we're, we're looking for something about this particular property that, that says this person is deserving of an exception from our zoning codes. Um, whereas a special use is a little more lenient in that we've already decided, well, in this zoning district, we're okay, or in this situation, we're okay with oversized garages, uh, so long as they're not going to have a negative effect on, you know, in, in this particular location.
So I'm not hearing much desire to go ahead and draft up a text amendment. If we were to discuss this again at a meeting, is there, are there any particular pieces of information that you would want staff to gather?
Perhaps the number of oversized garages that exist in the village over 800 square feet. And, you know, if, to that, if there were not too many of those, maybe some assessment of where they lie on the property or any of them over the property line or any of them encroaching, you know, on required side yards. Personally, I don't mind pursuing this, but I guess I would rather have a little clearer, um, direction from the board as to what the value, what the rationale is for pursuing it.
To avoid making, and I'm not, I don't think the garage issue necessarily does this, just to be clear, but perhaps a, a survey of the property inspections that have been done for, uh, property sales in the past year or two to get an idea of how many properties are you seeing that are turning over that do have significant non-conformities that would cause an issue? Um, and when I say this, the, the point of what I'm asking for is so that you're not looking at every single property in town and trying to find non-conformities. It's, you've already got them documented. It should be relatively non-onerous to look at those and say, we've got in the, in the 50 houses that have sold in the past year, 10 of them have driveways that were non-conforming or garages or whatever. I'm picking on those two items because that's what we just talked about and that's what's in my mind.
That, that would be helpful, I think, but there are other non-conformities that, that regularly appear on those compliance certificates such as side yard setbacks and, you know, if we're talking about the, you know, where the house is structured or where the house is built on the lot. Yeah, I'd like to see that. That's, that's a, that would be a great, great information to have for further discussion.
Sorry, to Commissioner Brown's point, I was only picking out examples. I think everything that you mentioned, just any non-conformity that would cause an issue is really what we're thinking about when you're trying to reconstruct an existing structure or accessory structure.
Well, Assistant Village Manager, do you, is this possible? And how onerous is it? And would you prefer that it be more limited in scope in some way? Make this more practical?
I was just taking a peek. Uh, there, there are some benefits to doing this remotely at my desktop. I can look at our files immediately. As we were talking, I looked at, uh, for example, the files that we create for each, uh, compliance certificate and there were over a hundred since January 1st of this year. So, and then that's not all of them. So it may be an exceptionally busy year for real estate. Having not been here prior, I couldn't attest to whether it's busier or less busy, but it certainly, it keeps us plenty busy. So, um, there are a couple of things that we look for in those compliances specifically. We measure out the garage size, especially if, if it's a detached garage or a shed. You know, we note that if there's a driveway non-compliance, we'd have to go into the actual certificate to identify whether that's something in particular. So it, it's not too bad. It might take a couple of hours. I would say to have staff look through if there were specific items that we were seeking, uh, it would likely be easiest, again, to pick out impervious surface coverage, garage size or shed, you know, accessory structure size. That, that is probably the first tier of easy. And then beyond that, if there were sizes that we were comparing, we would have to go into actual plat for each of those properties to identify whether they are encroaching on a property line. So there, which, sorry, excuse me, I will clarify that. We do see also in our data that we track whether they meet the side yard, rear yard setbacks. So if we can identify what, how many of those, that, that's not too bad either. So like I said, it would take probably several hours of a staff person's time to review that information for a year of, of span of time, or we could do an even smaller sample, six months, and we would probably have a pretty good idea of that. So if there's a specific set of, of information, if it, like you said, is the, if it's a garage size, if it's plus encroachment, we might be able to figure out a way to match those or statistically match that kind of information and provide it by, by the next meeting or whenever you'd like to talk about it again. Francisco, did I miss anything?
Uh, no, I don't think so. No, I think you've covered everything in terms of what we see mostly, or at least what I see mostly when it comes to non-conformities.
So accessory structure size, impervious surface setbacks, you think those three categories would suffice?
I, yes, those are the biggest ones that those, those are the ones in my mind that become the biggest issue. It's the overhangs. It's the, it's the things that are close to other people for a more layman's summary term.
Other commissioners want other things from this dataset? Any other information that you would like to see from staff when we discuss this again?
Well, I, I mean, there are other things. I don't know if anything is important.
I'm sorry, say that again?
I think there are some other issues possibly, but I don't, I think those are the major ones, yes, impervious surface in particular. Which includes both for the buildings and for the total impervious surface.
Okay. Unless somebody has a final thought on that initial discussion, I'd like to move on to, B, under new business goals and objectives for permission work plan. Francisco, are you leading this conversation?
Uh, I don't believe so.
Okay.
Not, no.
Am I leading it? Ashley, are you?
Is it, this is an opportunity, so just to preface this, uh, the village board of trustees has requested that each of the commissions come up with a work plan, um, of what you hope to accomplish in 2022. You can, of course, can start early, but, um, you're, the idea is that, uh, commissions, even with those who are receptive to community interests like, like yours, we hear issues of sent to by the village board or, um, a resident a resident request or community request. If there are things that you'd like to accomplish, whether it's reviewing code sections or addressing some issue that just identifying those in a work plan and um, presenting that to the village board for approval is what they've asked of each of the, the village commissions and as we roll into budget season as well, if there are things that, for example, a commission that wants to plan some type of event or hold the, you know, certain trainings or things like that, we need to account for that when we're planning financially. And so that's why we'd like everyone to talk through the work plan and that's where your, your discussion and participation kicks in. If there are particular initiatives that this group would like to accomplish, it's, it's up to you.
So these are initiatives that will occupy more than 5% of the commission and staff's time. I anticipate that the RTA rezoning effort, which will come to us next year probably, um, in terms of public hearings and recommendations to the board. I think that would be one initiative that would go into our work plan. Just FYI, we had a steering committee meeting last week, the week before, where we saw the first draft of um, their proposed changes to the zoning code. So it's finally moving along. Excited about that. And Commissioner Miller, one other thing that I have asked staff to prioritize, something that we discussed um, back in March, when we were um, having the AIMS public hearing is, how do we calculate impervious surfaces? Are different materials counted differently? Do we match what MWRD does? Will, will we add an allowance for water storage, things like that? So I, I think that would benefit not only us when we have variation requests, but also staffs to, you know, uh, standardize how these calculations are done and putting it in code. So residency, how it's done. And if we think that's going to take a long time, maybe we can add that to the work plan. Other ideas? Please.
I actually have three other ideas for things that the PCC could look into. One of them feeds off of this whole impervious surface conversation, which is for a reassessment of the bulk requirements for percentages of impervious surface, both for buildings and for total impervious surface in the various districts. And to see if the PCC still thinks that those percentages are good for, on whatever criteria that we wish to set. I'm not, I have no idea what this criteria might be. Or is there massive non-compliance and therefore we shouldn't have those, or should we ratchet them down? And um, so that's one item. The second item feeding out of our last meeting on the home offices, we started discussing detached structures and then we also made that change to uh, allow 12% of uh, property surface to be for accessory structures or detached structures. But then when I'm looking at that section of the zoning code, I find it somewhat confusing as to what exactly is a detached structure? And I don't need to go into all the details of, of the um, definitions right now, but two specific things to me that's unclear is whether a deck is a detached structure and a pool is a detached structure, because there is a reference to a detached, detached structure being something that doesn't share a wall with the principal residence, something like that, I think. And I don't think a pool or a deck tends to share a wall with the house. But I'm guessing that most people would consider those to be attached structures. So I think that could potentially just impact onto this 12% analysis as well as impervious service. So that's another thing. And then uh, one last thing I've been thinking about for a while is the um, the zoning restrictions for the uh, area that's R3 near the Displanes River, that whole Groveland-Lincoln area. And assessing whether we should allow for increases in the bulk uh, of buildings that could be placed there. So to perhaps deal with impacts from the river flooding, et cetera. To perhaps allow, for example, for people to easily get approval without going through the variance procedures to do certain work on their homes, such as building one story up and things like that. To try and address some of those problems that people have. Because actually, R3, the, the heights are, I think, lower than in other districts for some reason. So just in general, in that area, to, to see if there's anything we could do with zoning to to spur some work on those properties that could improve the uh, you know, the quality and the standards of those properties so that they're not as subject to being damaged.
Ms. Monroe, do you think that's something we should bring up to RTA or keep it in-house? The discussion about potentially, about looking at R3's both standards?
Well, we have to just consider that there is a segment of R3 zoning requirements within within the applied study area. And so I think at least the, the topic being brought up for discussion and whether it would indicate that there needs to be some subset of zoning requirements, would those that are on the west part of town over the river equally apply as, as they are in Harlem Avenue? So I think that's a good question in order to determine what, you know, what those standards might be and if they're applied differently based on you know, where that R3 zoning is located in town and if that would require a, some type of reclassification. So that's, that's my initial thought, but in terms of, of other standards and reviewing, then you know, I think you could approach that as, as a commission as you would for any other zoning classification.
Thank you, Commissioner Miller. Those are good. Other initiatives that you've been thinking about? Okay, well, I'll start working with staff on the work plan and we'll bring it back, draft back to you. And continue working on it.
I just wanted to say one thing. I was getting some glitching there, but I wanted to correct myself for the R3. Actually, the height is a couple, the allowed height is a couple of feet higher than the other districts, but I do think, and perhaps for the other parts of R3, we, maybe we should assess whether there could be any zoning changes that would help to spur improvements or redevelopment of some of those properties. So stick by that.
Thanks. Okay. Next on the agenda is information. Francisco has an update on existing gravel driveways and feedback from homeowners.
I do. So I sent out, um, was it 21 letters? It's about last month. To the gravel driveway um, list that we have. And about six people reached out, whether it was via phone or email. Um, I got a couple of, I had a few disgruntled homeowners regarding some of the, you know, they were a little bit confused about the ordinance. Um, they had some questions just regarding, you know, just some clarification uh, about what was needed to come into compliance for the driveways. I went up to a couple of, of sites just to speak to the property owners um, and to you know, clarify the ordinance to them and it, you know, it seemed to help hearing it from a person and not just having it in a letter. There have been a couple properties that have applied for uh, permits to convert from gravel to one is converting from gravel to asphalt and the other one is converting to a brick driveway. But the rest are still gravel. Um, from what I've seen, when I've kind of driven around Riverside, most of them are within the kind of maintenance standards. There's, there are a couple that need the, the edging. One gentleman at 124 Berry Point called on Monday and they're going to be redoing that gravel driveway and getting the edging done and you know, cleaning up any high grass or weeds or anything on that property to um, you know, kind of bring it into compliance and into the maintenance standards.
So I printed out the list of 29 properties that we had at one point and yesterday looked at all but two of them. And I saw four that were either favors or asphalt, two that looked like they were in compliance and all the rest of them were not. So I think we might have different standards for being in compliance with the gravel. I mean, most of, all of these, they haven't done anything in the last year since the ordinance changed, in my opinion.
Oh, from the list that you had versus what, the, the one that I had?
Yeah, so maybe we can talk tomorrow and compare addresses.
Yeah, um, because I, I, before we sent them out, I, I went and I double checked to make sure that it was the correct ones, but I might have some um, or overlooked others, but yeah.
So to fresh memories, the 124 Berry Point, they have the shared driveway with 128 and they originally came to us for variation to keep the gravel driveway and that's what started this whole thing. So they have known for a very long time that they needed to maintain this driveway correctly and they haven't done anything.
So yeah, he called on Monday. He said he was looking into the contractors to do that. To, he was also gonna talk to the neighbor because it is a shared driveway. So he was going to speak to the neighbor to figure something out for, for that gravel driveway there.
Um, and this letter that you sent out, was there a deadline for compliance?
It was December 31st of this year.
Of this year?
Correct.
They received the letter last year saying they had to become compliant in December 2020, but there was for various reasons, no follow-up. So again, all these property owners have had a lot of time to fix their driveways.
So yeah, and, and we'll keep, um, or I'll keep, uh, you know, looking uh, and making sure that they are coming to compliance. If they not, they aren't, then you know, I will reach out again and try and push them in the right direction for the gravel driveways.
So Francisco had asked me if we had discussed whether the grass strip down the middle of the driveway was okay? And my response was, we didn't explicitly discuss it, but my understanding was that we did not think that that was okay. If you're going to have gravel, you're going to have gravel. And even the code says there's no vegetation in it. Did I accurately represent our opinion? Commissioners?
That, I'm going to jump in this with both feet. That sounds accurate. What my initial reaction is, which is why I'm saying I'm jumping in with this with both feet, is that sounds like a way to have less maintenance and just allow a bunch of weeds to grow in the middle. To be perfectly honest.
Right, yeah, I, I would agree. I think if you were going to have a strip like that, you'd have to have it edged with metal edging or something. You can't just have it where the cars, tires don't travel and therefore you've got a grass strip.
I would support Commissioner Miller's thoughts on what a grass strip down the middle needs to be maintained as, which is the out, look, needs to look like the outsides as well. But just random green stuff in the middle is, isn't going to cut it.
And that's what we have. Commissioner Matthews, did you have a similar or different opinion?
I, I have some thoughts. Um, I, I'm not really sure if I'm ready to uh, formulate this, this um, right now. So that, that's all, that's all I can say. I am not, I'm not, I'm not sure where I'm, where I'm falling in this. I, I will say um, well, no, I, I'd, I'd ask you rather not. Um, I mean, I don't think we're asking for a vote or anything on this, so I'm just going to serve my right to maintain my silence.
That's fine.
All right, thanks.
This is just an information update. Commissioner Brahm, any questions or thoughts?
I wasn't on the commission, obviously, when the whole gravel driveway uh, decision was made, so I too reserve my thoughts at this time.
Okay. Thank you, Francisco. Um, I'll send you a note tomorrow. Maybe we can, we can chat.
Yeah, sounds good.
My research. Okay, uh, if we have nothing else, our next meeting is scheduled for October 27th. And please, hopefully it's already in your calendars, but our November and December meetings are on the fourth Monday rather than Wednesday because of the holidays. Hopefully those are in your calendar as well. So if there's nothing else, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
I second the motion.
Thank you. Francisco, please call the rule.
Uh, let's see, Commissioner Brahm?
Hi.
Uh, Commissioner Miller?
Hi.
Commissioner Marhol?
Hi.
Commissioner Matthews?
Hi.
And Chairperson Mateo?
Hi. Meeting is concluded. Thank you, everyone. It's good to see you again, even if it's in our little boxes.